Welcome councillors, director of staff, the notice to general manager is here as well. So, welcome to the ordinary meeting of council on the 25th of January 2021. I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land we are on here today, the Wurragjiri people, and pay my respects to their elders, both past, present and emerging. Declaration of webcasting, I inform all those in attendance at this meeting that the meeting is being webcast and those in attendance should refrain from making any defamatory statements concerning any person, councillor or employee and refrain from discussing those matters subject to closed council proceedings as indicated in clause 14.1 of the code of meeting practice. I notice that all are present, so there will be no apologies. Any declarations of interest? No declarations of interest? We've got two lots of minutes councillors to confirm. The first is the 23rd of the 11th, 2020, and there's been a correction made to those minutes by the general manager, item five in those minutes. Somebody like to move? Move councillor Smith, second to councillor Goodall. Those in favour? Thank you. The second lot of minutes is the extraordinary meeting of council on the 18th of first, 2021, which I'd really like to move. Move councillor Ring, second to councillor Smith. Those in favour? Thank you. Declare that carried unanimously. Commemorations and announcements? Any commemorations and announcements?
Yes, Mayor Thompson. Congratulations to the Lithgow Theatre Group for their wonderful performance at the Potree on Sunday. It's an amazing venue, I had never been there before. Excellent, an excellent play. The Tarranar Community Group displayed much initiative by trialling their first Twilight Markets last night. I have never seen such a big crowd at any market since I've been going to them in our local government area. It was a great initiative and congratulations to this hardworking volunteering group. And I think how very fortunate we are in our local government area to have a range of such talented artistic people. I was asked to open an exhibition at Gangang Gallery just recently and congratulations to Sharon and her staff for the amazing venue that they provide now for people that have this talent in our local government area. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Statham.
Mayor, if I could, I was probably listening.
Just one moment, councillor Coleman, please.
I have one as well. Mayor Thompson, I'd like to acknowledge the Creative Dementia Workshops that was started on the 18th of January. They were hosted as well at the Gangang Gallery. I was given the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of council. They thank council for their ongoing support. It's a great initiative. The Lithgow Dementia Alliance is a great initiative and they should be congratulated for what they're doing within the community.
Andrew.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, this is probably a preemptive one. I note after tonight it'll be another month before our next council meeting, so I want to preemptively acknowledge and congratulate those within our local government area who will receive prizes and receive acknowledgement tomorrow, so I'm getting in early.
Yeah, thank you councillor McAndrew. Councillor Smith.
I have two, I'd like to, with sad words that I, the passing of Lyn Pate and Pam Williams in the last fortnight, I mean, very sad for our town. And also I'd like, on behalf of the Pro Grisus Association of Whang, I'd like to thank the council, especially Summer Hitworth, for all the work that she's done in regards to tomorrow's celebrations out at Whang Club. It's very much appreciated and she's done a great job.
Thank you councillor Smith. We have no public forum and no merrill minute.
Mr Mayor, sorry. Just on that matter, first of all, just as an abundance of caution on my part, I would declare a conflict of interest on 13.5 confidential report, final investigation report, code of conduct matter. I had, I'd missed that, I'm not allowed to be in the room anyway, but I thought I'd better say that. But I'd like to ask a question though on public forum. I note that we haven't had a public gallery now for nine months or so. I appreciate that the council staff are sitting in the public gallery and carefully using Covid separation rules. I would be surprised, although I don't know, whether the same separation applies for council staff in the council's tea room, for example, and through the council administration buildings. I'd just like for you and the general manager to consider the timing and the possibility that we could reopen the public gallery to the public. I think it's, it would be a great benefit to our democracy, you know, for anyone who is interested to hear us, I don't know why, but anyone who is interested to hear us, you know, should be entitled to be able to come. I'm not saying it, I'm just asking.
Yeah, look, I haven't got a problem with that councillor Lesley, but I don't know whether it's still a directive from the office of local government. Mr McGrath, can you throw any light on that? Ross.
Through you, Mr Mayor. The, well, the allowance for councils not to have public in attendance as long as they webcast their council meetings was extended by the office of local government to late March, but the administration is considering whether it's appropriate to change that earlier.
May I say something, Mayor Thompson? I have had a lot of people ask me about public forum and I've been able to clearly say that it's not something local government is allowed to do, but then it was brought to my attention that we have people come here to give us information on information sessions and we have up to three people coming at a time. So I think, you know, I think as Ross has just said, that there should be some allowance for a time factor. If people are allowed three minutes, don't give them an extension, they leave the building and another person, we may not get anybody interested unless there's something on the agenda. But I think that it has come to a stage where it's almost been a year since we've had public forum and I realise the staff have to be number one and separated, but in many information sessions it's been brought to the attention from people that know that we've had information sessions, that there are two to three people in the chambers visiting from different companies.
Yeah, look, we'll look at it, yeah, we'll look at it councillor Lesley, certainly look at it. Notice of motion, councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Local Economic Recovery Fund.
So it's very straightforward. The Bushfire Local Economic Recovery Fund is one of the largest funding packages jointly funded by the Australian New South Government to see in a long time.
Mayor, happy to second it.
And, thanks councillor McAndrew. The Lithgow Local Government is one of those. Now, the Zigzag Railway has suffered through two disastrous bushfires and is working towards reopening in late 2021. You've all received the emails, such as I have, from the board and they bailed me up at the bushfire recovery day and told me their story and told me their initiative and what they were going to do. I was moved by that. I then facilitated a meeting between myself, Zigzag Board and community members of Clarence. We met and we discussed it and they have the support of the Clarence community as well. I think this is really important, we need to get behind this. I've also received three other applications for letters of support for me individually from other groups. I think we should provide as much support as possible to those who are putting in for this funding package. This is an opportunity we cannot miss.
Look, I'll just get the general manager quickly to speak to this because council is supporting a lot of these operational things at the moment, so, Mr General Manager.
Yes, Mr Mayor, the notice of motion is entirely acceptable. Lithgow was devastated by the bushfires, profoundly affected and we're certainly looking to ensure that Lithgow gets as much of these grant funds as are possible. So there have been a number of community organisations that have approached the Organisation for Letters of Support and those have been provided and the same can be the case for the Zigzag, of course.
If I could just ask a question councillor Coleman, the people of Clarence and Dargan, what is their position with Petra Avenue regards?
They still want that to go ahead, this is a separate issue. As I said, they still want Petra Avenue community space to be realised because the Zigzag space won't be available, you know, at certain times. So the Petra Avenue community space still needs to be realised, so they still want that to go ahead.
But did they prioritise which one they wanted to go ahead first?
They'd like both, I think they can both come up together, Mayor. I don't think one's a priority over the other, I think they can both come together.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Yeah, look, I support the recommendation as a second, but I did have a question and the GM may have partly answered that. The GM is well aware that I was also approached and I forwarded on two email requests, they've since been afforded letters of support from the GM and council and I thank the GM and council for that. The only thing though, in council supporting the various applications, is it up to us to look at the satisfaction of the requirements or is that left ultimately to government? Like requirements not for profit, bushfire related, community rate, those type of restrictions or requirements of the application? So am I right in saying we can send off letters of support to each of those local organisations asking for that support? However, whether they meet the criteria or not will be dealt with by government, is that the way I understand it?
Through you, Mr Mayor, yeah, that's the approach we're taking. We're not forming an opinion about the project's compliance, it's eligibility against other projects. We're merely indicating that if the decision-making authority found this to be a worthwhile project, we'd be pleased to have it in our city. The other thing that we're doing is just putting any of those parties on notice that council by supporting does not accept any responsibility nor financial, makes no financial commitment to these projects because we're not being asked to do that and they have to stand on their own feet with these organisations.
Councillor Smith. I just have a question for councillor Coleman, is this funding separate to the one that Mr Tool announced last week councillor Coleman?
This is a funding package jointly funded by Australian New South Government, designed together, so it's a funding package and anybody within the, anybody within a bushfire affected area can apply for it. So as far as I'm concerned, anybody who has the nous or has the skill to write an application should apply.
Part of the criteria councillors is that any of these applications need a letter of support from council, they do, so. Okay, is there any more?
I just want to add something.
Sorry, just before you give a reply councillor Coleman, is there anybody else like to speak on the matter? Councillor Goodall.
I support this as well. I was just wondering, will it affect Petra Avenue? Is it possible, can we hear from, I'm not sure, administration to make sure that we're not, if we give a letter of support to one, the other one's not going to happen in the same space in the same community, is that?
Mr General Manager.
It's not really that easy for us to make the judgement at this point in time. I think we need to see how it plays out. If by way of example, this application was to succeed with Zigzag, I think responsibly council would revisit in consultation with the community whether there's the need for the both. I think it'd need to play a mouth, we're not scoring one against the other. Council may recall in the case of the Petra Avenue one, we're still working with the community group, we just need to understand more about their business model and their management model going forward, so we're still having those discussions with the community.
And I am unaware at the moment and maybe they have, but I'm not aware that the community up there have put in for this particular grant, have they? I'm not aware of that. No, no.
Not aware that they have, Mr Mayor.
Okay, write a reply councillor Coleman.
Just on Petra Avenue, I believe that this is a separate issue and Zigzag's putting this application on their own two feet. It has to succeed first, I mean, they're just applying for the funds, then they have to be success at obtaining the funds, so we don't put the horse before the cart just yet on regards to Petra Avenue. The other thing, the other comment I'd like to make is that this letter needs to be done ASAP. I acknowledge that we've got a public holiday tomorrow, but it needs to be done before, my understanding and the general manager can correct me, before the 28th. So we need to get our skates on and get it done as soon as we possibly can before that date.
Thanks councillor Coleman, I shall put that then councillors, those in favour? I declare that carried unanimously, thank you. Councillor Coleman, notice of motion, responsible cat ownership.
Thanks, Mayor. Do I wait, or do I start?
I'll be in a second.
Thank you. Look, I just want to break down the management's comment first. The suggestion from staff that the statistics be a component of the operating plan every six months isn't a bad one, however, for the purpose of this debate, the statistics are important so that councillors can have an informed discussion. And we're looking at partnerships bringing resources, so we're not taking resources away. The, my notice of motion is about mobilising the community, creating partnerships, which is what really matters. Look, I've been approached by, and I understand that councillor McAndrew has as well, the AFI in conjunction with Secret Creek Sanctuary and UNWS, University of New South Wales, are looking for support in regards to building a wildlife hospital and rehabilitation centre, which potentially will serve the central best. So this is also going to assist them if we do our job in regards to responsible cat ownership. I'm not asking for money, which is not mentioned in my motion, this is about looking for opportunity, not restrictions. I've been approached by several residents about the issues in regards to cats regarding, you know, just, you know, risk of disease, injury or fighting and being killed by motor vehicles, but also the risk to our wildlife and with the bushfires going through, wildlife is suffering enough. So I'm just asking for a report to come back, I'm not asking for anything more than that and it's about building partnerships with our community.
I'm confused a little, I'm not sure what if bringing back monthly statistics on the number of cats, what that would actually tell us, what the purpose of that is. I like the idea of creating links with the community, I am aware of Operation Cat, which is a partnership that currently exists between council and the Cat Protection Society and local veterinarians, which is a reduced cost for dissexing cats. I understand that the effect that it would have on wildlife, I just don't, I probably don't understand dot point one and why that probably can't be incorporated into the, into the report from council as it says in the management comment. I don't know how you educate the community on keeping cats indoors, I don't, you know, that's every, it's what stage does everyone have to be accountable for their actions? We all should look after our pets as they need to be and it wouldn't hurt, but I think talking to Mr Muir today, any opportunity that council can have to jump in with an organisation to offer assistance to council with a program with veterinarians would be great.
Mr Muir, oh sorry councillor Ring.
Yeah, look, Mayor Thompson, I don't support the notice of motion, this work's already been done by council and when you go to the council's annual reports, specifically if you look at 2009 and 20, there are four pages on the animal shelter. The statistics are publicly available now. This is really redundant, we've got this information there. Dealing with pets, the cats, dogs, birds, whatever, is very emotive. We do have a problem with feral cats. And that is the responsibility of local answer services, national parks, landowners, state forestry, we need to be working with them to get something done. We have had programmes done by local land services around our tips in the past, it's been reported through the Environment Advisory Committee. And there was also a study, tracking study done with local land services in 2016, which tracked 14 domestic cats on Lithgow. One cat travelled several kilometres, most cats were travelling up to 700 metres. Yes, they will kill native animals, but I also believe we've got a bigger problem with the feral cats at the moment. In terms of controlling cats, how far do you go? Do you tell people they can have so many cats, where they can put them? Then that sort of legislation needs to come from above. I believe council's already working with the community, working with different groups. Operation Cat saw 45 cats dissexed last year, we had, I think, from this, 35 dogs dissexed. I think we're doing a good job, I don't think we need to do this again. If anything, the Environment Committee needs to possibly talk about feral cat management within the Lithgow local government area.
Thank you councillor Ring. Councillor Lesley.
Councillor Ring just mentioned the annual report, I tried to look up Lithgow council's latest annual report just a couple of days ago and I couldn't see it. Was, is it, has it been published? Just, that's just an aside from.
Mr Ginn.
I went in and I put find annual report and I didn't get it, but maybe I didn't know where to look, that's fine. It doesn't matter whether it's been adopted, as well as available to people to read.
It's fine, I don't know whether it's been.
Anyway, that's just an aside. Speaking to the motion which I support, living next to a cat person, you know, someone who collects, you know, 10, 20, 30, 100 cats has to be one of the worst things that can happen to a resident, seriously. It's just debilitating on their lifestyle, it harms everything they do, it makes their own backyard unlivable, it's just appalling, it has to be worse than living to one of these hoarders that has piles of rubbish around their backyard, it's just got to be the worst thing at all. And so I think that the council, any way that the council can help and support, you know, some form of help for these people and some form of control on the accumulation of cats and possibly dogs in our environment has to be a good thing. One of the issues that did seem to come up in this debate now was that the pound, Lithgow Pound is giving cats out, and I, correct me if this is wrong, but giving cats out to just without checking that where they're going and to the environment and backyard that they're likely to end up in and therefore exacerbating the problems for neighbours. Now, if that's correct, then I think we need to have some form of control with the pound to ensure that, you know, there is a list of suitable owners that are being supplied cats by the pound and certainly no cat being released from the pound should be released without it being, you know, dissexed at all. And I would, and I would hope that in due course, when we do, when this recommend, this recommendation's a start, as I see it, it's a start of the process and so I support the recommendation and, you know, the idea of dissexing the cats is good, but we need to investigate it further, it's beyond my ability to investigate it as such, but, you know, that issue that I've raised about where the cats is going, I think that would be a very good start.
If I may, Mayor, very briefly, I like councillor Goodall, was trying to understand exactly what the recommendation is wanting and I do lean towards some of the points made by councillor Lesley. When we look at recommendation one, monthly statistics on the number of cats surrendered to or impounded the Lithgow Animal Shelter, I'm not so much concerned about knowing that number, I'm concerned about what happens to them when they're impounded or brought to the pound. I understand that all councillors received a resident email in relation to this matter, I take it all councillors received it from resident and that email talks about that resident catching and taking wild cats or cats that are owned by nearby residents and not controlling them to the pound and then finding out all the pound has done is give them back to the owner. You know, I find that a little bit bizarre, that's not really dealing with the problem. So I'd be more concerned to understand exactly what the process is. If someone brings in a poddling cat and the owner has found it's a simple matter of just giving it back to the owner, then it's just creating the problem, that's what the email that was sent to all councillors indicated to me. So if we can, if I can get an answer on that, I'd be appreciative.
Mr Muir. Excuse me, while you're answering that question, could you give some thought to how many cats a person's allowed to have? Because the way that I read it, they can have as many as they like.
There's no limit, there's no limit, no. I suppose in relation to the question councillor McAndrew's asked, in a situation where a person has had a cat seized, for example, by a neighbour and has been dropped at the pound, and that particular cat has been registered and microchipped and the owner is able to be contacted, then that, yes, that cat could be released back to the owner, there may well be penalty regarding that for being off the property and being a nuisance. There are facilities within the Companion Animals Act, if, for example, similar to dogs, if it's an habitual offender, it can be declared to be a nuisance cat. A situation, and I think there is certainly a difference between, I suppose, wandering cats and feral cats obviously, any cats that are obviously feral, the council's companion animal policy does point out what actions the staff can take in that regard and it is possible, if the cat is an obvious feral cat, it can be euthanased. In relation to the dissexing of cats perhaps once they are at the pound, firstly, the Companion animals act, there was a change to the act of last July which allows now for if a person does not wish to have their cat dissexed, they now have to pay an annual fee of $80 for that. So that's supposed, the government.
Sorry, is that per cat?
I believe it is per cat, yeah, 80, 80, 80. The problem with cats, of course, is they are very mobile, they are very mobile. It can be tracked certainly if they're registered because of their mobility and the fact that I suppose not all people do register their cats, there can be an issue there for sure. However, having said that, the council does have a policy, it does probably raise a number of these items which we're talking about. And I might suggest rather than sort of considering a number of these things on the run, if we had a good idea of the sort of things that we'd like to see included in a review of the policy, then we'd be happy to do that. And perhaps just thinking about it, if a person had a cat released back to the owner and the owner's able to pick it up, you couldn't enforce that that cat be dissexed, you couldn't do that. But if it was being released, it was a domestic cat which is being released back to another party to rehome and to a good home, then perhaps as part of that policy, the council might consider that before it's released that it be dissexed. And these are things which could perhaps be canvassed and brought back in terms of a review of that policy.
Mr Muir, just before you leave, I haven't got a problem with this in real terms, but if there's a review, couldn't we review all the animals, like pigeons and cats and dogs and, you know, like they, surely they're not separate, are they in the?
There's a definition of what's a companion animal under the companion. There, there's a definition of what's a companion animal under the Companion Animals Act, and that's essentially cats and dogs.
Councillor Goodsell.
Just from Mr. Muir's still there, sorry, through you, Mr. May. So what would the ratio be of dogs to cats that are brought to the pound?
At the pound? Bear with me. I did ask the rangers to prepare me some information today, so I might be able to answer that, if you'd just bear with me for a moment. For example, probably, I'll, I'll go back to say November. November, there was sixteen dogs, twenty-six cats and kittens. December, there was twenty-three dogs, fourteen cats and kittens. January, we have eighteen dogs, four cats and kittens, two rabbits and a sheep. So there's a little bit of variety, not too much in the way of, of stock. Rabbits is an interesting one, but yeah. I'm not quite sure what we'd do with rabbits, because I don't think they'd be companion animals, so I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Matt.
I agree with this notice of motion, but we have this dramas out there where we live too. And surely a, a starting place would be a media release in regards to the finds that you can be, be put opposed upon you, whether it be a cat or a dog. Look, we need to start the P, the PR somewhere. Like, and I agree with councillor Coleman's notice of motion, but if people don't know the finds, well, maybe they need to know, you know? And look, a stray cat, we, I have a Labrador, we have a cat that goes through my yard every night, and I know it's a cat, and my dog goes off his head, and the bloke across the road complains. It's, it's a, a problem we have. We need to get on top of it and, but a, a PR release, we do media releases for everything else. We need to get on top of this and put it out to the, the community that it's, it's a problem within our community.
Mayor Thompson. Yes, if I could get a second, or I'd like to make a slight amendment to the recommendation, please, if I can get a second, and that is that we do have staff that are busy and the scarf, the staff that would be skilled in this area are extremely busy, the rangers. If I could get a second to say that instead of doing monthly statistics, go to point one, the first paragraph of the management comment, which says be reported to council on a six-monthly cycle.
Happy to second, Matt.
Thank you, councillor Goodsell.
I'm happy to adopt it in any way.
Thank you. And the other point I did have written down just before councillor Smith suggested, a penalty infringement notice. You know, we are entitled to give them out, start perhaps giving more of them out. That's not to get revenue for council, that's just to make people more responsible. So if I can get in that amendment to get the, the number one recommendation to change to six monthly and also the management comment, the first paragraph to, sorry, six monthly, and include penalty infringement notices after a media release has been released.
Yeah, I'm happy to accept that.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Councillor Smith.
Councillor Goodsell, you, you seconded the first motion.
Yes.
And the second, and the amendment as well.
Incorporated, still my motion.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak to the amendment?
There's one motion.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
There's one motion.
Sorry, yes. Righto. Councillor Coleman, write a reply.
Thank you. Residents aren't going to look for the annual report, especially when it can't be freely local, like, they can't find it. If it's on the website, they're not going to go looking for it. So this is really important. Yeah, it may be a state legislative issue, but we need to have, we need to have the conversation here as a council. We need to have the conversation started here. A resident who was a bushfire victim recently had a total of sixty cats. And, because we don't have limit on cats, and he lived within, I'm not quite sure, but he lived within a bushland area. His property burnt down and a number of those cats were, had to be euthanised because they suffered greatly. And, but also did the wildlife in that area was also being impacted at the same time. Wandering cats turn into feral cats really quickly. And I didn't realise this until the other day. Cats like foxes kill for the fun of it. Not for the hunt, not for the kill, not to actually eat. They kill for the fun of it. They will decapitate an animal just for the fun of it. Now, I actually have a cat of my own. I actually love cats. I grew up with cats. But every night, as a responsible cat owner, I lock up my bell in a shed and let her out every morning. Cat Defence is a great organisation that we can partnership with. When I got my cat, she came immunized, dissexed, fully trained. There are people like cat, organisations like Cat Defence that we can actually partnership with to do a lot of the work.
Okay, then I shall put that, then those in favour? Those against? Councillor Ring against? Notice of motion, councillor Goodwin, road damage, Melangoo, Marigoo Reserve.
Yes, ma'am.
Happy to second it, mayor.
Sorry, thanks, councillor Ring. I went out there a couple of weeks or just before Christmas, and I'm deeply concerned at the state of the roads, the land and the hand paintings of the glyphs at Mainga Marigoo, at Blackfellow's Hand Reserve. Like I said, I had the opportunity to assist in the removal of graffiti around this landmark and the tourist attractions out there. I was disappointed to see that part of the road to the Bungabori campground had been damaged so much that the hole in the road was as deep as a car and it was impossible to pass unless you're an experienced four-wheel driver. Campers continually camp at that location, leaving rubbish in the bush. And people who have visited the area have graffitied the, the glyphs on the rocks. This area is a very sacred area for our local Indigenous people and as caretakers of this area, the Lithgow Council need to patrol this area more frequently to identify any problems and rectify them. My recommendation was that Lithgow Council consult with Indigenous groups as soon as possible to identify and rectify any road damage around Mainga Marigoo, Blackfellow's Hand Reserve, and identify and resolve any ongoing issues around the Indigenous sacred areas of our LGA that from time to time may arise. It's just, it's deeply concerning to me when I go out and help our fellow Indigenous people in the town clean off graffiti that, that people have, have come down and, and put their own hand paintings on the rocks and their own, you know, dates of birth or the time they, they, they were there in paint and in charcoal. It just wrecks the whole place. And, and this whole area is sacred. It's not just the hands on the, on the, on the walls that, that's sacred out there. It's the actual, the whole area. So I'm just looking at council to try and have a conversation with the, the local Aboriginal groups and the local Aboriginal people to, to find out a best course of action for that area to move forward, so we don't lose the, the glyphs and the hand paintings and that sacred site.
The reserve was established as a recreation reserve in nineteen hundred and eight. It was declared under the National Parks Act, section eighty-four, it's an Aboriginal place, in two thousand and eight. And in two thousand and thirteen, a plan and management was prepared, sponsored and supported by Mingar Aboriginal Corporation and Lithgow City Council. Funding came, I believe, through the Hawkesbury Catchment. But not a lot of work, there's been some work done by various Indigenous groups, but we need a holistic approach to this site. It's a significant site. Repairing the road's not going to stop people going in and vandalising. It's actually going to make it easier. You have a lot of illegal four-wheel drive activity or motorbike activity out there. These are matters that need to be resolved. Council needs to look at its resourcing. And let's, let's be honest, we run this council on the smell of a gnarly rag. We need to be working with our groups in order to achieve an outcome. But we need to get the Indigenous people to sit down and have their say and be given ownership of this issue and support them in resolving it and getting a long-term solution. This site could be a significant tourist attraction. But we still need to manage the sacred sites that are out there. I think there's a women's site out there, a men's site, there are occupation sites, as, as well as significant environmental matters. When you look at the plan and management back in two thousand and thirteen, it's not just campers dumping rubbish there, you've got asbestos dumped out there in the past. People are dumping all sorts of things. We may need to look at physically blocking this road off so it's only used as a fire trail. So then we can secure funding for it, but having the area where we've got a proper car park and people can actually walk to specific sites that the Indigenous community is in fact happy with. So look, I, I fully support this and I'm glad councillor Goodwin brought this to, to the council's attention. That's long overdue. We need to start being more actively involved with our Indigenous community and preserving our Indigenous heritage.
Mayor, I equally support the, the notice of motion and I applaud councillor Goodwin for bringing it forward. I've had concerns about this area for, for a long time. And once I, I read the commentary in relation to the hand paintings themselves, I've come to the conclusions that, that we must in some way, or whoever's responsible for it, must in some way have a physical restriction for people to be able to go in to touch those hand paintings. If we don't, we're going to lose them. And they're, you know, they'll never be able to be replaced, thousands of years old. And I'm aware of other areas that I've visited where there's either perspex or there's, or there's mesh where you can, you can watch, take photos and see, but you cannot physically go in and touch the, the hand paintings. That's something that, that needs to be looked at. We need to go through our local Indigenous people in relation to that. I support strongly that point of view by councillor Goodwin. I also support the, the comments made by councillor Ring. Councillor Smith and I did go along and have a look at the road. Not the road that finishes at the hand paintings themselves, but a small, small part of a road that goes on further. You can see clearly that some of the holes been dug by hand to make it a four-wheel drive track. Now, we've got to give some strong thought in stopping people coming to the site from Bungabori. They're not coming to the site to see it or look at it. They're coming to drive because they're told it's a four-wheel drive track. So we will have, in my view, have to look in the future at a blockage, a blockage, a gated blockage, because I understand the road is a fire trail. So a gated locked blockage at the Blackfellow's Hand site and also a gated area at Bungabori. So it is used for what it should be used, as a fire trail, not as a, a four-wheel drive track. And the other areas, I'm, I'm more knowledgeable in relation to the major area where the hand paintings are, I'm unaware of the other areas that, that they can still be walked to. It's not a long distance, but we've really got to look at protecting and looking after what we've got there. And we've got to really start giving thought to make it impossible for people to be able to go in and physically touch or deface those hand paintings.
As councillor McAndrew said, we went out there last week with Mr. Edgcombe, and it's a beautiful site. And I thanked councillor Goodwin for his notice of motion. But I agree, we need to close that road off. We need to close it off. We need to sit down with the Aboriginal community and consultate with them. It's, it's something we can't lose. Not only does that road need fixing up, but the road off, off the Woggin Valley Road needs fixing up. You'll go out there on weekend after weekend, you'll see four-wheel drivers opposite that entrance by the hundreds, motorbikes, four-wheel drives. As a police officer, councillor, Mr. Goodwin would know only too well. So we, we really need to get behind this, but we definitely need to close that road off. And as councillor McAndrew said, look after those hand paintings and all the other areas. And perspex is much more the thing, but in consultation with the Aboriginal community.
Mr. Matt. Just one moment, councillor Leslie. Councillor Coleman.
Look, yeah, I support this in principle. The challenge I have with it though is it's not a designated public road. I want some advice from the staff in regards to that. I note the management's comment on the second page said that the RFS does offer competitive funding for the maintenance of registered fire trails. Council has made an application for this funding, but this request was denied. Is it possible that we could speak to, Paul Toolhappens to be the minister for regional roads and get him to support more funding in this area? Or support us in another application to the RFS in, in trying to help with ensuring that it does actually have funding? That's one of my concerns.
My understanding is if it's not used as a tourist destination, the RFS could fund it. Mr. Edgcombe.
So is that where we're heading with this?
I'll just ask Mr. Edgcombe for his opinion.
Not quite my opinion, it's more the, the feedback that we've got from trying to receive RFS funding for the required improvement works to the Blackfellows Hands Trail. It is not a, a public road. It is indeed a registered fire trail. However, given the extent to which we promote the Blackfellows Hands through our various tourism programs and, and the like, the RFS have determined that its priority, its main purpose isn't actually firefighting, it's for recreation. So that's why they have suggested to us that if we were to restrict recreation access from the, from the bottom of the hill, basically further up, then it may improve our chances for leveraging RFS funding for the repair of registered strategic fire trails.
Mayor, could I just clarify one question while Mr. Edgcombe's up there? I'm well aware that Blackfellows Hands is signposted very well from the Lidsdale end of things. I understand it's not signposted up at Bungabori, is, is that correct?
There's, I've ridden my push bike up there a couple of times. There's a little street lane.
Yep.
And that's about it, I think.
So, you know, my, my point being is, my view is it was never intended that the, the site was visited from that area in the first place.
Councillor Leslie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We must keep in mind that, that it is a fire trail and, and fire trails are meant to be used for fire trail purposes. And so that's, we, we can't just be thinking of closing roads or fire trails, whatever. So we keep that in mind, whatever. But I would, I would speak against any form of, of prevention of people actually getting to the fence or a gate or a perspex glass or whatever to prevent people getting to the, to the hands in that, in that ma... Well, anywhere, but particularly in that major overhang that's there. I, I've, I've been watching, seeing these, these hands for sixty years. And, and it's, it's, over that sixty years, they've actually faded enormously. And, and it's, it's sad to say, but of course you can't repair them. It's just the, the constant air movement and, and the light that just, is just slowly, slowly taking that colour away. It's, it's sad, but, but, but I believe if you... And indeed, at one stage, I remember visiting that place many years ago, and there was a very large screen in front of the hands, a big, big wire mesh there. And the next time I went, a year or so later, it had gone. Now, I suspect it went because it was, it was seen as, as not effective. People, including myself, as a young, young guy and older, want to put their hand up in front of, two or three inches in front of one of the hands just to, to see how it's done. As a... I didn't touch the hands, and I don't think most people do. And clearly, most people haven't done that, because if you'd had a lot of people, they, they would just disappear immediately. I mean, this is just, but they, they want to see it. And, and I would believe if you start putting up perspex screens or wire meshes or whatever, it will just be seen as a challenge. It'll just be seen as, there's no attendance there. We're not, it's not an art gallery where you've got, you know, the, the attendant sitting in, sitting in the corner, watching everyone come through the, you know, the New South Wales Art Gallery. There's, there's no one watching. They could, they could, they could spend all day, you know, with a, a hacksaw or whatever, doing whatever they wanted. And, and you, it's, it's the way it is. You just have to, and it's, it's sad, but on the whole, I think it's been vastly respected. You just have to trust people. It's, there are other things we can do, education we can do, that's fine. can do, that's fine. But it's surprising how little, in my view, how little vandalism has occurred at that site. It reminds me of streets where you've had a lot of vandalism on the roads and then the council or the local shopkeeper or something puts up a very large mural, a very expensive mural, and the vandalism disappears. It disappears for years because the people have seen this new mural and they respect it as being an attempt to do something, whereas before, they just saw that wall as empty space or open for whatever tagging you want to do it. I would challenge, seriously, I really would challenge anyone putting up any attempt to screen it. I think that would be a mistake, it would seem as a challenge and I think the damage, well, in my view, would be totally counterproductive.
Mayor Thompson, could I make just two points please quickly?
You've already spoken councillor Ring.
Fair enough.
Look, I, under the circumstances, I'll let you make your two points.
With respect to fire trails, it is not uncommon for fire trails to be restricted for access or have locked gates on them, particularly on National Parks Estate or other areas. All Fire Brigade trucks carry universal keys. It's called a bolt cutter, they'll just cut it. Two, it's not up for Europeans in this council to determine how this site is managed, it's up to the Indigenous community to tell us how they would like it managed and for us to facilitate that management. Thank you.
Yeah. And I take on board what some of the councillors have said. They want to converse with the Indigenous community and find out what their thoughts are. Councillor Goodwin, write a reply.
If I could just say, Mr Mayor, I support this motion.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, I agree with bringing up other organisations, but what I would like is to see that the Blackfellows Hands and Marangamarugu, on any meeting that they have with any type of outside organisation, that the Indigenous people would be at the table at that meeting and have a say in what goes on there, whether it be a fence or whether it be a gate or whatever. They should have the say of where it should be whereabouts because it is a very significant sacred Aboriginal site. I've just wrote a couple of points down. Nothing should be decided upon in this area by organisations and white people without first having consultation and agreement from our First Nations people. Our First Nations people should be involved in every meeting that occurs in that area. Lithgo council is currently the organisation that has responsibility for the management of that area. And it's not just about the roads and about the management, it's about the entire site. Simply put, we have ancient rock art in our local area that attracts people to our area. And if these sites are not preserved for everyone, they'll be gone forever, ever. We won't ever see them again and our kids won't be able to go and see them. So, we need to do something now, not in 10 years' time or 20 years' time. The site itself's not just about rock art, the site in its entirety has cultural significance. There's a women's area, a man's area, there's birthing and consummation rocks. It's a spiritual area for Aboriginal people and the Aboriginal people are the people who should be deciding on what happens in that particular area in consultation with the other groups. They should be at the table. There are also other sites in our local area that we need to manage as well, Aboriginal significant sites. And my notice of motion was to sit down and just have a consultation with the Aboriginal people to find out where we go from here and to start the ball rolling. So, that's my write of reply, Mayor.
Thanks councillor Goodwin. I shall put that then. Those in favour? Thank you. We move to item 10, natural disaster, local.
Happy to move, Mayor Thompson.
Happy to second. I do have questions, though.
Move councillor Ring, seconded councillor Coleman, councillor Ring.
This is a good move, I believe, on behalf of the government. I think the council applying it to our whole LGA and the LEP is appropriate. Approximately 50% of our LGA is either national parks or state forest. We're a high-risk refires, as we well know. This cuts out a lot of bureaucracy for people having to rebuild once their house is burnt down. It speeds up the process. It allows people who have built legally to rebuild without necessarily having to meet current Australian standards. This is a good outcome for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Look, I just have a lot of questions that hopefully through you, Mayor, through the general manager can get answered. What requirements are currently in place regarding the current bushfire codes? How would this help speed up the process compared to the current process? Are we confident that nominating zones, the nominated zones are subject to flooding and bushfires?
Councillor Coleman, just before you run through all of those, Mr General Manager, you wouldn't be able to remember them all if you can't, we'll do one at a time. We'll do one at a time.
Okay. I'm happy to go back over them again.
Mr Mayor?
That would be nice, Mr Mayor, perhaps one at a time.
Do you want to start again?
Yeah, start again, thank you.
Okay. What requirements are currently in place regarding the current bushfire codes?
Well, the requirements really relate to the rural fire issues, which is mainly the bushfire attack level. Now, what we've found is that bushfire attack level is now significantly greater than it was when some of those buildings were originally constructed and that's been one of the main constraints that we've had through this process. In terms of the planning regime and what constraints there are in the current system, what we've found in terms, we think this clause is by and large a very good idea. We are aware of other places where they've had problems with, say, for example, a dwelling was constructed on a lot of land where the area of that land under new planning controls that have since come has now prohibited that. And what this does, it makes a lawful way of them being able to get that approval. We haven't encountered much in that regard because we don't have those requirements, for example, in the Clarence and Dargan areas where there's been an issue in that regard. So, what we've been able to mostly do is apply our normal planning instrument, the assessments done by our building surveyors against the fire issues, but we also have to refer that in most cases to the Rural Fire Service. So, there haven't been really, there hasn't been a lot of issues where that would have sped up the assessment of applications, but it could happen and this is a good thing to do.
So, this will speed up the process? Because that's the biggest issue a lot of people have.
Yeah. In a situation where the planning scheme, for example, prohibited something now, which didn't, which they were able to do in the past, it would definitely speed up the process.
That's reassuring. So, are we confident that the nominated zones are actually subject to flooding and bushfires? How did they come to that conclusion?
It was an assessment by our strategic planning staff against the documents that we have in line at the moment. So, the answer has to be yes to the question.
Okay, cool. How will this affect that particular area in regards to insurance premiums? Will the insurance premiums are going to be effective?
I can't answer that question.
Okay. I just have one more comment. I see on page 10 of 52, council cannot refuse a DA simply on the basis that it does not comply with a development standard or other provisions in the Lithgo LEP, 2014. Can you?
I suppose.
What does that, you know, what does that mean for these people in regards to this?
The best example might be a minimum lot size question and that might be a situation where a person has built a house on land some years ago, say it was, I don't know, 10 hectares and now in the passage of time, the lot size is now two hectares. The council, with the implementation of this clause, is not able to refuse a subsequent development application because this clause protects that particular property.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just while Mr Mueller is there, so it's plain and simple. What I understand is if a home was built under a previous LEP, burnt down and is to be rebuilt again, it will be rebuilt under the terms of that original LEP?
Yeah, well, in a way, that's one way to look at it. It won't be the terms of the previous LEP. The new LEP that's come in after that can't affect what they previously had. It can't affect.
Okay.
Yeah. That's one way of thinking of it.
Right. In relation to the new planning restrictions on building in bushfire-affected areas, they're still, that's still in place for people rebuilding, is it?
It is. I do understand though that there was some movement in relation to that in the not-too-distant past to try and relax some of those provisions.
So, I'm not talking about the LEP now, I'm talking about those provisions that are put in place post-bushfire.
Yeah. Those are the provisions handled by the, basically by the Rural Fire Service.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Thompson? Sorry. Reading the recommendation, it's pretty clear that the fast-tracking of some of these proposals will occur and I think if you can definitely speed up the process when some of these people have, you know, experienced the worst tragedies of their life, I think those people out there that have been affected will be very happy with that.
Absolutely. That was just what I was going to say. Anything that's a clause to be inserted into anywhere in our LEP which will escalate development consent for repair or rebuild, it'll save time and resources for residents as well as council staff.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that this covers all natural disasters, not just fires, floods, cyclones, extreme storms, it covers everything. We get flooding in Lithgo, we've had severe fires and we have had severe storms like mini tornadoes. Rosed Hartley lost a roof off a couple of buildings and that came through from Baffers, followed a straight line out, did a lot of damage. So, I think this is a great outcome for the community, not just here, but for the whole state. I think this is really good.
I shall put that then. Those in favour? Carried unanimous? We move to item 10.1.
Mayor, I'll move the recommendation on page 21.
Move to councillor McAndrew, seconded councillor.
But with a change to, with a change on five, Mayor.
Mayor Thompson?
With a change on five, Mayor.
Councillor McAndrew and councillor Smith.
I, just in relation to the secondor, I do want to make a small change on recommendation five. I want to remove the last words, council will terminate the process and add, following on, if agreement cannot be reached in this regard, the matter will return to council with a report canvassing a pathway forward. And I can explain the reasons for that if the secondor is happy with seconding that change.
Yeah, happy with that.
Mayor, just dealing with that change to five, first up, I felt that although the recommendation deals in my view with the matter that I brought to this council some time back, I felt that item five virtually was a, virtually expecting the owner to virtually have to agree to pay whatever. And I thought that was a bridge too far. I know the, in the body of the report, it talks about there shouldn't be too many extra reports, but I wouldn't expect anyone to agree that, well, I'll just agree to whatever the charges are for the agreement to go forward. So, I think that's fair. If that agreement cannot be reached in regards to any future charges, then the matter return to council. I just want to speak to the reasons why I support the application. It talks about, on page 17 of the report, it talks about industrial development demand and I just make, I quote, to date, there's been no additional development or take-up of the industrial zone lands within the investigation area since the commencement of the LEP 2014. So, what that's saying is that there hasn't been a great deal of competition to take up industrial land in that area. And it also goes on to say, for the potential impact of Greenspot Walarang repurposing a former Walarang Power Station, that is now saying effectively, for this small area of industrial land that's reverting back to residential, that any concerns about loss of that industrial land will be picked up by the Walarang, the repurposing of the former Walarang Power Station. And it goes on further, Mayor, in page 19, where it's beside the option four preferred, the third dot point, there will be no net loss of industrial to land in the Walarang Lidsdale precinct as the loss of the industrial to land in this area would be replaced with the additional 3.5 hectares should the planning proposal for Blackgold Motel proceeds to LEP amendment. This provides greater justifications for inconsistencies with the adopted Lithgo 2040 LSPS and relevant planning directions under section 9.1.2 of the Act as being of minor local significance. And I'll close, Mayor, on my initial comments on this basis. As far as I'm concerned, this is bringing it back to the status quo and bringing it back to fairness in relation to the owner that was impacted by this. I just need to remind everyone that this brings it back to the status quo and it's taking it back to what it was when it was changed. In fact, I've been advised that in the LEP in 2014 was always, this area was always supposed to remain at residential or lot residential, large lot residential, but it was changed at the 11th hour and put in late by the general manager at that time and no one can tell me the reasons why that was done. So, in completion, it returns to that family, back to where they were before their residential allotment was changed overnight with the strike of a pen from residential to industrial. And this is a fair and proper outcome to return that back.
Thank you councillor McAndrew. Councillor Smith?
I know this has been long-winded and it's taken, I've been a councillor over four years now and I'm so pleased to see this go back to the rightful way it should be. I'd like to thank Mr Mayor and his staff for working with a few of the councillors in regards to pushing this back to a fair outcome and the resident that this affects most will be very pleased with this outcome and I thank the council staff once again.
Thank you. Councillor Ring?
Yes, Mayor, I support it. I'll even support the amendment, although I did support the original concept of the proponent paying any additional costs, but if maybe, that can be debated at a later time. For me, what this highlights and should for all councillors is that LEP's decision was on them, Central Department of Planning, Industry and Environment. They have the final say. When you read through this report, it's a juggling act by our staff. We just can't rezone the land, take off industrial land and just go, let's kind of get rid of that, without having substantial reports that back that up. What we're doing is going, we've got land that Blackgold are looking at developing and that will make up for this land that's being lost here. I think that's a very good way of doing it. And I agree, the thing with the Blackgold, but not just that, the power station, Greenspot, we've got 450 hectares of industrial land we've never had. That's going to impact on a lot of our zonings and the next LEP is going to be significantly different. But yes, I would like to congratulate the staff on doing that balancing act. Still got to go through, I believe, the DPI, eh? But I think it's really important that we understand that that's where the final decisions rest, not with council.
Anybody else? Look, just before we vote on this, on page 20 of the report, there's a little map up in the top and, you know, I'm not making excuses, but it was very, very easy for councillors to miss that that particular item at that time was being rezoned into industrial land because there was a house on it and it was residential. So, I know that we did vote for the LEP, but when you have a look at that map, it's very, very easy to miss that there was a, that there was a house on it and that was changed. Anyway, I shall put those in favour. Item 10.2, a proposed road renaming cavity.
Happy to move, Mayor Thompson.
Happy to second.
No, nothing to discuss. It's a straightforward report, which is just push it through.
Yeah, look, thanks Mayor Thompson. Look, rural community is always at high risk when there is a medical emergency or any other emergency. So, I think clear street naming will assist in this matter. naming will assist in this matter. It's also important to work with the community, especially when we have names that are very similar. So, yeah, I support this recommendation, and I definitely support it going out to the community for 28 days. That's really important.
Anybody else like to speak to this? I shall put it then, those in favour? Carried unanimously. Ten point three.
Happy to move, Mayor.
Happy to second, Mayor.
Move councillor, move councillor McCandrew, seconded councillor Ring. Councillor McCandrew?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I move it. It's, um, pretty self-explanatory, and, and I'd make the point that, um, we have had an earlier report going back some time, but I note that council voted for a further, uh, extensive report to be brought back, uh, and I note that. Mayor, I do have a question, though. I, when I look at page thirty and the total of four-two-two-nine-nine-six, but the further three dot points seem to be separated from the, um, from it all. Am I, can I get some explanation about, um, what they were, how they link, or even if they do link into the, the breakdown of expenditure above, or were they positions that were being looked at and had to be put in, uh, to place anyway? Or were they part of the, um, um, the legal undertaking that we, we reached? So could I get some clarification, so I know exactly what the expenditure was with the cleanup, but what some of the extras may have been?
Mr. Buckins?
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so the, the costs provided on page thirty of the report are costs incurred to date. That's everything we've expended in relation to the enforceable undertaking, including the cleanup. The caustic tank replacement's actually been separated out. The caustic tank replacement was budgeted prior to the actual incident occurring. So that cost has been included just as an indicative cost, or the cost as part of that replacement, which was part of the asset renewal, hence why that's a separate portion. In relation to the items below those positions, they are included in the total of the enforceable undertaking. They're not included as yet. We still haven't completed the recruitment for those positions. Two of those, the asset maintenance planner and the water and sewer engineer were part of the enforceable undertaking. They were positions that we had to recruit. The water and wa, the wastewater treatment plant operator is an additional position because of the under-resourcing in that current area, and noting that we're taking on additional infrastructure, uh, being the Cowan Bull and STP and the retick in that area. We already knew that we were understaffed, so that's an additional resource on top of that. Um, those positions are also outlined. Prior to me coming on board with council, council did undertake a review of the operations area and identified that there were shortcomings in some of those critical positions. It hadn't been identified exactly where we needed to expend those funds. This incident drew that out of exactly where we needed those positions and what that focus should be. Hence, the EPA had agreed. They also, uh, noted that these positions were critical in ensuring that we continue to comply and perform with our licence obligations.
Mayor, can I just then, so I understand you correctly, um, although it was picked up in the enforceable undertaking, we in a way were looking at those positions in any event?
We had to basically sit down, review the operations, and determine where those functions sat, where our issues were. Uh, that operations review pointed to a number of shortcomings. Uh, it was how it was going to be resourced wasn't fully identified until after this incident, when we actually sat down. The EPA gives some recommendations as well, uh, which we agreed with, uh, and hence where these positions have come from.
In relation to the last one, the, um, Farmers Creek weed eradication, is that linked to it, or is that separate?
That is part of the enforceable undertaking.
Undertakings.
Uh, there is a requirement when you enter into an enforceable undertaking that you have to provide a number of benefits, and there has to be a community project.
So would I, I be right saying offsets? Is that the right, like, an offset?
Yeah, it could be considered an offset. It's basically, uh, any enforceable undertaking has some form of funding to a community program generally factored around an environmental program that provides benefits to the community.
So last, those last three, uh, those last number of dot points are a combination of what was required under the enforceable undertaking and what we were going to do in any event?
That's right.
Okay. Mayor, I just want to, I just want to finish off on, um, making a couple of comments for, um, for clarity, and I, I read from page thirty-one, 'the incident that the Wularrowang STP resulted from a faulty fitting which failed after seven years when it should have had a much longer effective life', and in brackets, 'please note that council has now been advised of other examples of similar failures. Secondly, a valve had historically been fitted in reverse to normal operation. These two factors combined to allow the material to leave the site. Once that happened, council, of course, accepted the responsibility to remediate the situation and that imposed costs. The matter, this matter also reinforced the findings of previous management reviews, as Mr. Buckins has just alluded to, of this operation. In these additional staff, skill and procedures were identified as areas needing attention. As a result of this incident, the council has moved to address these areas of need with even more urgency. The incident and the enforceable undertaking has thus created benefits in terms of the long-term function performance of the wastewater operation. Lessons have been learned from the incident. On balance, council will improve as a result of this experience. We would have all liked to have this not happened, but I think in fairness, um, uh, staff has done the best, um, that they've been able to do in dealing with it and then, um, making improvements as a result of it, and I congratulate the staff on that.
Uh, Mayor Thompson, look, I'm, I'm more than satisfied with the report. Uh, all councils are required as part of their, their licences to submit annual reports to the EPA. Those reports, annual reports are publicly available on their website. I looked at a number of councils, just did a quick search and read, and most, most councils breach their licence requirements for STPs. The reason for that is the licences just don't cover the actual treatment plant. They cover the pipes leading to the plant. They cover the pumping stations from the communities. Anything can cause a breach from a blocked toilet to a power outage. It happens. The staff have learnt from this. This happened, we move on. Hopefully now this is gone to bed.
Thank you councillor Ring. Councillor Coleman?
Uh, look, yeah, it's a good report. Congratulations, Mr. Buckins, on a great report. It's very well detailed. It's a shame that it wasn't brought forward sooner. Um, I'm encouraged that we'll work towards being proactive, not reactive now. Like, I see that for this council, we need to work on that. And I do note that we've put in place actions that hopefully this doesn't happen again. So, but I'm encouraged that we move forward and be more proactive instead of reactive.
Yeah, I, I don't know whether I, uh, whether I agree with that. You can't be proactive until you, until you have a problem.
That's just to hope we've learnt from this, Mayor Thompson, is what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Councillor Leslie?
Uh, yes, it is a good report. Uh, it's a shame we didn't get a report, or a similar one, in November 2019. I know that we had a comprehensive report at the time, given to the operations committee meeting, a comprehensive report that was also a verbal report. So, so councillors weren't able to read the report afterwards, and it certainly was never published as, as such. Uh, we didn't get it at, uh, the March, March the ninth meeting when, when you put up a merril minute. We didn't get it to July when we had the, the, the enforceable undertaking given back to us by the EPA, and we didn't get it in October, uh, when...
Councillor, I don't know where you're going with this, but we're dealing with this report now.
Oh, fine, okay, well.
We're not dealing with what happened.
Okay, so we, we've finally got the report. So, and indeed, it's a excellent report. I would point out, though, that, you know, that the words '12,000 litres of caustic soda', caustic soda, that appear in this report come from my notice of motion that was carried by Lithgow Council in October 2020. And therefore, sixteen months after this environmental and financial disaster, the words '12,000 litres of caustic soda' have never once appeared in a report written by a council staff member or, or prepared by a council staff member. It doesn't even appear in the final investigation code of conduct report coming up later tonight. It's always called the incident or some other wording, suggesting it was only a minor matter. Uh, councillor McCandrew's questions were very good questions. They, they were questions that needed to be asked, not, not sixteen months after the event, but at the time. But we've got them, and, and well done. But just how minor was this, was this matter? Well, my addition, my addition on these figures on, on page, uh, twenty, the expenditure associated with the cleanup, not including the second one of 2,000, which I internal plant, which may or may not have had to have been included, but I add those are up to $324,197. And we have also ongoing staff appointments. Now, these staff appointments may well have been in line, or they may have been as a result of this, but they're ongoing, and, and those staff appointments are a further cost of $321,600. Everything about this incident, and that's what it's always called, this incident, has been secretive. I remember saying on Channel Nine that the culture of Lithgow Council has to change. This statement is so obvious, I didn't even get a code of conduct charge about it. But the initial report to the operations committee was a verbal one. Comprehensive report it was called, but this is despite it coming to the operations committee two months after the, the incident, incident, and the council still couldn't write a written report to it. What we got from that was discussions were had in relation to our, to the recent chemical spill at the Wularrowang STP. The committee were advised that remediation works are occurring at that site. That's what we got then. The merril minute we got from you, Mr. Mayor, was no better. That was six months after the spill, the first time councillors were informed in writing of this incident, and that statement's been confirmed by an independent reviewer. We were told in that merril minute that expenditure to date was nil. In fact, I don't know how much of this expenditure of the cleanup, but I assume that the cleanup was taken within the six months of the spill and before the merril minute came through in March the ninth, 2020. But if, but I add it up to being $324,197, hardly nil, and yet we've never had a correction on that. We've never had a response to that. We've never had a case where the, the councillors, the staff, the community have been advised that this was, this was incorrect. My, just a question to you, Mr. Mayor, was, was your failure to include these costs in your merril minute deliberate and therefore part of the culture of secrecy? Or was it accidental and therefore just incompetence? I mean, it's only, they're only questions, and I'm happy to...
I, I take on board your, your questions, councillor Leslie. You're the only one that didn't think that it was, that it come before council, because every, every other councillor was quite aware of the spillage.
The community was not, the community was not aware.
Councillor Leslie, you've had your say, okay? It's time for somebody else to...
I, I will just, I'll just finish up on this.
Councillor Leslie, councillor Leslie, you've had your say.
Oh, I do have an amendment, Mr. Mayor.
No, not yet, not, not at the moment. I'm just gonna...
Oh, yeah, fine. I'm, I'm happy to wait with the amendment later.
Um, Mr. Buckins, can you just, uh, relate a little bit of what happened during that period of time? We were in under investigation from the EPA. Can you, can you just clarify a little bit to the councillors what, what was happening at that particular time?
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as soon as the incident had occurred and it was brought to light that the caustic soda had left the treatment plant site in October, uh, immediately we were notified that this would be a formal investigation process. At that point, we all basically had to maintain some level of confidentiality. Um, and unfortunately, through these investigations, you're investigated on a personal matter, and you can be held personally liable. So anything that had something to do with the staff could have jeopardised that investigation process. So very little detail was provided, and when it was provided, it was generally a verbal update. Um, I made those verbal updates, um, and I actually left the site to come in and provide that to the operations committee as soon as I was notified. Um, now, in regard to the, the comment around the 12,000 litres, what is actually included in the, uh, enforceable undertaking is a public notice, which council drafted. EPA agreed to the wording, and inside of that, and it was made public as soon as the enforceable undertaking was entered into, it made note of the volume of 12,000, uh, litres of caustic soda. That was printed in the local print media as well as in the Sydney Morning Herald. So at no point have we ever not disclosed the volume. It has always been made public. As far as the mayor's merril minute, uh, it was simply seeking a resolution to make application to the EPA. There was no costs expended as part of that process. The two matters were treated differently at the time. There was the enforceable undertaking and a resolution to make an application, and there was the incident. It was dealt with as a separate matter, hence that there was no cost as part of that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Buckins. Mr. General Manager, did you want to have something, something to say?
Uh, I did want to say something, and I by no means want to, um, stymie, uh, the debate, but nor, um, do I want to sit here and, um, allow such a, you know, a perception to be cast to the public, um, that we're a broken organisation and failed in this, uh, this matter. Um, there, there is a point in time where this was a legal process, and I'm sure the councillors are very aware, um, by, when they bump into this in media reports and the like, um, that when you're in a legal process, you're in a legal process, and you can't disclose where, where that is going nor make admissions and the like. We were in a legal process until the enforceable undertaking was agreed and signed. As soon as we came out of that legal process, as soon as we came out of that legal process, the enforceable undertaking was publicly available. As Mr. Buckins said, there were advertisements in local media and the Herald. We put the issue in the annual report. We referenced it in the annual report. We weren't obliged to do that. We brought a report to the council in October, and here we are again tonight with another report. Um, I just wanted to say that in the time that I've been here, I've come to realise very quickly how complex it is to run a sewer system and a water system, uh, for a place like Lithgow. It is incredibly complex, and we don't always get it right, but our team is doing the best that they can. We're not pleased with this, uh, with this incident, um, this spill, uh, from the Wularrowang STP. Um, but I could not let it go on the record with the public that are watching, um, that, uh, this has been buried or that the council hasn't, uh, been informed. Um, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Councillor Smith?
Mayor, it's time we moved on. How many times do we have to rehash over the same ground? We've had the, we've got the report in front of us. Everybody's read the report. It's time to move on. Mr. Buckins has, has stood in front of us and answered the questions we've asked. We just keep going over old ground. It's time to shut the door and move on.
Would somebody, would somebody like to move that the motion be put?
Councillor Woodsville?
Yeah. Councillor Woodsville's moved that the council, that the motion be put. Those in, those in favour?
Amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, it's been moved that the council, the motion be put. Those in favour? Those against? Councillor Coleman? Right, uh, I shall now put the, I shall now put the motion. Those in favour?
Well, that's, sorry. It's called, it's called secrecy.
Thank, thank. Right, I declare.
It's called secrecy, councillor.
Uh, we move to finance and asset reports.
Yes, we've got your name recorded against it.
And, and please note that my attempt to move an amendment was denied.
I did, oh, I, I had motion from the floor that the, that the motion be put.
Yes, but I'd like my, I'd like it recorded that I attempted to move a, an amendment, and it was denied to me.
Move, I move, uh, item ten point four, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second, look.
Nothing to add, Mayor. Pretty straightforward.
No, same.
I have, I would like to speak to it. Okay. Look, can we please have someone clarify the term restricted assets? I note that there are five items listed in regards to funds being used specifically listed. I'm just a bit confused, because I thought parking... a bit confused, because I thought parking would go back into general revenue. So, can we get some advice in regards to that paragraph, in regards to restricted assets may consist of externally restricted assets which must be spent for the purpose of which they have been received, water, wastewater, I understand that, domestic water, I understand, but it's got parking or internal restrict-, like, it's got parking mentioned. I'm just a bit confused about that. Why is that a restricted, like, I would assume that it would go into general funding. So, can we have an answer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I will clarify that and confirm that. I have had some discussion with the General Manager about making some changes to this report and the information about restricted assets. I would expect that that's referring to the CBD parking rate, special levy, not to any parking revenue.
This is very confusing, because you've got parking levy, and then you've got parking, and then you've got infringements. So, I just wanted some clarification in regards to what that actually means. But if you could get back to us, that'd be great. Thanks.
I move, Mayor Thompson.
It's a good plan. I think we should just adopt it and move on. There's nothing really to talk about.
Happy to move, but I do have a question.
Have you a second? I've got no questions.
I found this report really confusing, because it's very similar to ten point four. And then I looked into it a little bit further and closely, and I noticed that there has been a lot of funds disappeared in about four weeks. What has driven the change? Can Mr. Gurney respond to that? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In the month of November, it's a rates instalment month, so we had significant cash inflows in that month. And that's the main reason why a lot of funds come in in those quarters when rates instalments are due, and more cash tends to go out than comes in in the other months. And December was one of the months where more cash went out, and there were payments for council's normal operations and capital works projects included in that. Obviously, there are a number of days in the months in the month of December when council was shut down, so we paid a lot of invoices before that.
No, I'm fine with the report. Thank you.
I'll move that. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Happy to second. I mean, I'd like to, council supports-
Counselor Leslie's right. It's simply determining if we wish to pursue.
I'll move that we do-
Excuse me, I have moved.
Well, you have to say which way you want to determine. I'm happy with that.
Well, I did have that say, so if that's okay. Yes, I think that council Lithgow RSL subbranch rarely make a request to council, and I think we need to consider the fifteen thousand dollars as a small price to pay for such a piece of rare artillery. We may never have that opportunity again. It isn't twenty-five or thirty-five thousand. Yes, it is fifteen, but I'm sure that somehow, with some luck, with even some funding, we could possibly manage to purchase this piece of rare gun. I think it's something that would be very rare. There's not many of them in the state, as you can read. It was a comprehensive report. This has been going on now for a very long time, and if we could just look into purchasing of this piece of equipment, then I'll be happy with that.
As a second, can I suggest an amendment? Yeah, so the motion reads council's determine if it wishes to pursue. I would like to change that, that council pursues, like, take out determine if wishes to, take out determine if wishes to, and council pursues acquisition of the World War Two artillery gun from the ADF disposal, and council- Yeah, because it's saying determine, we need to take out that, those three, one, two, three, four words there at the start of it.
Sorry, could you read that out again, please, Counselor?
The recommendation, council states, it's not succinct, and it's not actually giving action to the council staff. It says council determine if it wishes to. That's really wishy-washy. It's not going anywhere. And we need to be very clear on what we want. It needs to say council pursue acquisition of the World War Two artillery gun from ADF disposal. We need to give them action.
Counsel's statement, it's on the monitor in front of you.
Yes, it is. But, you know, I actually said Lithgow RSL subbranch rarely makes a request to council. Fifteen thousand dollars is a small price to pay for such a rare piece of artillery. In other words, I'm recommending that we buy it.
Yeah, but you haven't stated-
Not determining if and which. I'm recommending to buy the piece of equipment.
Well, that's exactly what it says.
That's what I'm saying.
Counsel to pursue acquisition.
I'm just putting it in a different way. Yeah.
It says council should, should council propose to acquire the gun, the community consultation be undertaken on its acquisition and location with a report to be brought-
Should should be taken out. Should say-
Happy to do that.
Yeah, should needs to be taken off. Council proposed to acquire the gun, council consultation to be undertaken on acquisition and location with the report to be brought to a future meeting.
Yes, Mayor Thompson. Look, it's been a long journey for the RSL subbranch. It doesn't have any association exactly with Lithgow and Second World War, but sometimes there is a rare piece of artillery. We do have talus in this town. We do have the gun emplacements, and I think this would be a great asset if we can possibly find the money to fund this. It's not a lot of money, and, you know, even if we could write to Talus to see if they would, you know, be interested in supporting this in some sponsorship idea. But I think, you know, it's something that we can't pass up, and the idea of having it in Endeavour Park is just a suggestion, but a suggestion from council staff that it may well be the best place if it was purchased. I encourage councillors to think about this. It's a rare piece of equipment that will enhance tourism and go with the industrial theme of our local government area.
Mayor Thompson, second. Now, once I've fixed it, can I speak to it? I agree with the fact that, yes, I think the Endeavour Park is a great place for it to be. I believe in that comment. In regards to funding, my understanding is that there's a Community Wars Memorial Fund-
There is.
-being offered at the moment. It does close on the eleventh of February, twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure whether or not we would meet the criteria for that. But we do need to start talking to the federal member, Andrew G., about other possible Department of Defence funding that's available. I know there's funding available. I'm not quite sure where or how, but we need to reach out to Andrew G. and get his help on this matter.
Yes, Mayor Thompson, if I may. I don't support the motion. Basically, there's no proof this gun was produced during World War Two. Period of production for this gun was nineteen forty-three to nineteen eighty-four. There's no association with this town or individuals in it. Yes, it's a rare gun, but we're not a museum. We're a council, and we are struggling to manage the assets we have. And it's very nice to say it's only fifteen thousand, but a number of councillors around here complain continually about this isn't made, that's not fixed, this isn't done. Well, we've only got so much money, and we have to bite the bullet. And ultimately, if this gets through, then it'll be up to the community to decide. If this gun had relevance to this community, I'd back it a hundred percent. It doesn't. We have enough guns and weapons and monuments in this community. I don't see this as a priority for this council. There are other priorities for our community.
I don't support it either. I think that to put us in a position to vote for this is not correct. If we went to the community and said, what are their thoughts on us purchasing a fifteen thousand dollar gun that's not budgeted for, and we need to tell them exactly what projects they're going to miss out on, what we're going to cut to pay for this gun. I understand honouring the past, and yes, if we can, like Counselor Coleman said, if we can secure funding for it to, so we didn't have to pay the fifteen thousand dollars, well and good, but not until that's concrete. And I'd love to hear the community's view on us spending money that we don't have.
I'd like to see this item deferred, and I back up exactly what Counselor Goodsell said. I think we need to go to the RSL, the RSL subbranch, so if they've got the money to purchase this. I'm the first person, as Counselor- Yeah, yes, I am. But I'm the first person to bellow when the mowin's not getting done or services are getting cut, and I can't justify this coming out of our budget. But I would like to move an amendment to defer this till we find out who is going to fund this.
I'm happy to second that. I won't speak to the amendment at this stage. I want to speak to the original motion, if I may, because that'll lead into the reasons that I support the amendment. Look, council, just over a week ago, council received a sobering report on our financial position, very sobering, battening down the hatches and look forward to a very difficult year. Look, I'm not just concerned about the gun and what it is, but it doesn't seem like anyone wants it. I would have thought the ideal spot would have been outside the Small Arms Factory Museum. They don't want anything to do with it. You know, the RSL subbranch's preference to weapon replace adjacent to the current artillery piece located in Queen Elizabeth Park. Well, there's clear, there's clear issues there, that also the existing items are all the scale of each other and so compatible, the subject gun would dominate over these because of its size. If I'm reading from that, it would be out of place. Goes on further talk about Cool Road adjacent to Visiting Information Centre. There's issues of lease. There's issues of, is that appropriate spot? The Tony Locetti sport gown, again, whether it's an appropriate spot. And in fact, there's issues with the showground being a public park, and an artillery gun is not consistent with that reserve purpose. And Endeavour Park, you know, looking at the size of it, I'd be concerned about children climbing all over it and getting hurt. So, I'm not so sure Endeavour Park's the appropriate place for it either. And so, there's just not the issue of cost. It's the issue of the appropriateness of it. Where does it go? And I look at the conclusion on page forty-one, while the Lithgow RSL subbranch supports acquisition of the artillery gun, it has no known historical connection with Lithgow, and no community consultation has been undertaken on its possible acquisition and location. Additionally, funds have not been allocated to proposal. It is recommended, therefore, that should council wish to acquire the gun, community consultation be undertaken first. Later, funding sources will need to be considered. And above that, it talks about council considering this proposal compared to other priorities, that we've got to look at what other areas that funding comes from. So, in supporting the amendment put by Counselor Smith, yeah, I haven't got a problem for deferring it, but I think we need not only the basis of deferring on the matter of what it's going to cost, but where are we going to put it? You know, a proper location has to be picked, and we're going to have to look at our community to give some consultation in relation to that as well. But once again, I point to the fact that where's the money going to come from? I certainly don't want it coming from some existing project that we've already made decisions on.
Can I have somebody that wants to speak for or against the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak for it.
The amendment?
I'd just speak generally in favour of the purchasing of the gun, of getting the gun. I, as you know, I'm right next door to the Southburn Falls Gun Emplacements, and every day and every weekend, I see, you know, families, young kids, some of them ride their bikes out, some of them just walk out to the guns in those emplacements. They walk, you know, clamber all over them. They move them up and down, move them sideways. They're just quietly sitting there, and it's a great asset, and people clearly enjoy seeing them. It is on the roadway, the pathway for people who come to Lithgow for tourism events and whatever. It's just there. It's just a nice, it's just a nice feel to the place. Now, it clearly can't go at the Southburn Falls Gun Emplacements, because they're actually specific to the guns that are there. I see no problem why it can't go to Endeavour Park. It's council-owned land. And I think you would find that over time, you know, families travelling to Bathurst, travelling along the highway will stop. The playground there itself is terrific. I wouldn't be concerned about the safety of children. When you're in the midst of an adventure playground, it's all part of the process of growing up. And I think it's, there's only six, very rare, there's only six outside of museums in the world. It may or may not have anything to do with Lithgow. I don't think that's relevant. It's just, you know, we're part of our society. We're part of our world. I think it's a valuable piece of military history that would be valuable to get. And I disagree. I think if we don't take it now, there are other people. I do remember a debate in this room not that very long ago, when one of our councillors says, I'll have it at Wellerangue. And I thought, well, that's fair enough, and that's probably right, too. So, there is, there does seem to be community support for it, but I just, I like the idea of having it. I think it's nice.
I've got an amendment. I need to put that, and then if it becomes a motion, people can speak to the motion. So, if anybody wants to speak to the amendment at the moment, before I put it?
I'd just like to say, Mayor Thompson, I support the amendment. I think we need to understand what sources of funding are out there, if any. Then it's got to go out to the community. The final decision will go to the community on whether or not this should be a priority for what are essentially limited resources, regardless of where the money comes from. Do we have existing projects that could be funded from the same grant? We need to know.
Mary, if I could, in relation, I second it. I'd like the words added, this matter be deferred until he determined who will fund the purchase of the World War Two artillery gun and where it will be situated. Because I take the point, if Wellerangue wants it, it's not even mentioned in this report, so that's one of the good reasons to defer, and look at all options.
I'd like to speak against the amendment.
Could I get that changed if the movers?
Counselor Coleman?
Just in point two of the actual recommendation that Counselor Statham and I moved, it states, council proposed to acquire the gun, community consultation be undertaken on its acquisition and located with a report to be brought to future meeting of council on the consultation results and detailed costings and potential sources of funding. That's already in the original motion. The original motion is stating, community consultation-
That's correct.
-future meeting of council, consultation results, and detailed costing and potential sourcing of funding. It's already stated in point two of the original motion.
It is. It is, but there was a, the part of the amendment that Counselor McCandry put in there that it be deferred, and there was a little bit extra added to that. So, are you quite happy to have that first part, Counselor McCandry? Oh, Counselor Smith? No, Counselor Coleman.
But it's-
Yeah, but on what Counselor Coleman just said, should council propose to acquire the gun? I don't want to acquire the gun at all. I want to wait till we find out where the funding, the gun's been sitting there for twelve months now. I want to wait till the funding, we find out where the funding's coming from, and then, if we get the funding, then the community side where Counselor McCandry, the location's going to be prior. This says here in point two, with Counselor Coleman just said, should council propose to acquire the gun? I don't want to acquire the gun yet. I want to find out- I don't want to acquire the gun yet, I want to find out who's going to fund it.
And councillor Smith's dead right. If you're reading the original recommendation together, that's fine. But as I understand, the notice of motion or the motion by councillor Statham and councillor Coleman is, no, we purchase it. And then we work out what we do with it. I don't agree with that.
I shall put the amendment as written. Those in favour of the amendment? One, two, three, four, five, six. Those against, councillor Coleman, Statham and councillor Lesley. I declare the amendment now the motion, amendment carried. If there's anybody who wants to, I've already spoken to it, so I shall put that then.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'll predict that we'll never get this gun.
Thank you, councillor. I shall put that then.
May I add please a point, I know it's out of line, but you've let other people speak this evening. You know, the foundations at Portland would be absolutely, absolutely excited, as would Wellerang, to get this piece of equipment. You don't think that we could possibly find out some funding for $15,000 to purchase something that we may never see in our lifetime in our LGA for $15,000? So just for a little bit of interest, I've asked 72 people about the $50,000 allocated for the amount of electric car spaces in Lithgow. I've got not one positive reaction. I asked 19 people about this and they're all that excited there's a possibility of doing something for tourism in our area. What a disgrace to have to defer, defer, defer. Anyway, I knew it wouldn't get through, it's no surprise to me.
Okay, righto then, well, that's carried, okay. Oh, didn't I put it? I shall put the motion then, those in favour? One, two, three, four, five. Those against? Councillor Coleman, Lesley and Statham. Council committee reports.
Move the adoption, Mayor.
Crime prevention committee, move councillor McCandry.
I'll second it.
Seconded councillor Goodwin. Councillor McCandry?
I just made the point, the last point, Mayor, there've been recurring incidents of graffiti and rubbish dumping and unauthorised camping at Mayingu Marigoo, I hope I've pronounced that properly. And that just goes on further to what we spoke about earlier.
Happy to move.
Happy to second.
The women's advisory committee are currently working towards their International Women's Day project and I'm looking forward to seeing the videos complied from that.
Happy to move it, Mayor Thompson?
Happy to second.
This is a committee, a joint committee. There are two reports in the attachments, one is the joint committee and one is the Lithgow Council Audit Committee. In the joint committee, just to like to read out, Cherie Bolteu, just from the Auditor General's office advised the committee that the auditor general is impressed that this committee has been proactively reviewing the performance audits that are tabled and applying them at the councils and indicated we're way ahead compared to other audit committees. And I'd just like to thank our finance staff because this is a good committee. The audit committees were set up by the government, there was not a lot of, probably fault put into it and what they should do, how they should operate. And I think that our committee jointly with Oberon has in fact led the way and have done us proud. I think that needs to be acknowledged.
And Mayor, just briefly, there are good points put by councillor Ring and if my memory serves me correctly, not, we weren't given much time or resource and my understanding, weren't given any funding for it either. And it would further cost the council.
I thought the chairman was, did receive an allowance? So there is a cost, I mean, but...
It's not funded by the state.
So, well, speaking of that, I also, I mean, I was a member of it there for a while and I felt it was a great committee too, sorry.
Happy to move.
All right, sorry, I better put that. Those in favour of the Eric Minutes? Carried unanimously. Now we'll go to youth council committee meeting.
Happy to move.
Happy to second.
Mayor, councillor Coleman, second to councillor Ring, is there any discussion?
Yeah, look, I'm just looking at the minutes and the youth committee should be congratulated on the discussions they're actually having. I mean, they're having discussions about the Irolu statement, which is, you know, really important statement. The youth council are encouraging to research that particular statement and come back, considering what we spoke about earlier on in the council meeting, I think that's quite appropriate. They're talking about Headspace and Planet Project. They're also looking at discussions around what sort of events they would like to plan for Youth Week, which is really important. I think that this committee, the way that it's been formed and it's now at the library and the committee room at the library has been a great thing and I really encourage this format.
Yeah, just that I agree, the youth committee's doing great work, they're a credit to our community.
I shall put that then, councillor, those in favour? Carried unanimously. Business of great urgency.
I have one, Mayor.
Councillor Smith?
Last Wednesday at Riddle Road of Wellerang and Willow Vale Lane at Wellerang, the Sydney or state water, whatever they're called, New South Wales water, they done some routine maintenance work on the, about half a kilometre up Riddle Road. Now, the residents that are concerned in both Willow Vale Lane and Riddle Road had no notification of this work going ahead. Now, straight away, one of the residents got on the phone and said, council, council, council. And we found out, when I rang the mayor and he rang Mr Buckins and we found out that it was state water. In this day and age, it is not satisfactory to turn someone's water off. As it turned out, in the long run, the water was off all night and come on the next morning with no written notification. We have set a standard within our community that when we have a water disruption, Mr Buckins is on the email or one of his staff, we know within half an hour to an hour in most times. For the residents to put up with this, this day and age, it is not satisfactory. We need to ask our general manager in consultation with Mr Buckins to take this on board to the highest level and get some better consultation to our community, but not just this project. We have a project just finished, it's come to conclusion in Wang, that pipeline that links all our town water and the public works or the state water, our council's worked in very good with these guys and they can't even finish our project out there. The walking path that we need resurfaces is now holding up, the residents are complaining and rightfully so. If we're going to work with state water, they need to come on board and be a bit fair and income too. So I'd like to see us take this on board and really let them know how our stance is.
Yeah, so it is already being addressed, councillor Smith, and the general manager may like to just expand on that if he wants to.
Oh, only that I can confirm that, yeah, we think, we agree that it's unacceptable. And it's a lively and constant discussion that we're having with Water New South Wales. But we'll certainly crank it up even more.
Mayor, can I just raise one? And the GMA have already been dealing with this, but similar to the issue that councillor Smith raised. You recall, councillor recalled in a Mercury report just recently regarding the water, the large water pipe break near the Queen Elizabeth Park that affected a resident's property. There was a story in the Mercury that as far as I'm concerned, I only give one side of the story. I did speak to the GM about it. Clearly councillor's received a very comprehensive briefing on it and it is, and it is a operational matter. So it is appropriate that a response to the Mercury should come from the GM to put forward council's view. So I'm just wondering whether, I know I spoke to the general manager about it, whether that's been done.
Mr Mayor, it's afoot, it's happening.
Mayor Thompson, through you to the general manager, please. There's been an incident with the water reservoir at Taranar and I thank the general manager and Daniel Buckins and the staff involved who have now addressed that situation and they're most grateful that that pump has been turned on now. And there was a suggestion from some people at Taranar markets last night that there is a council ranger apparently goes through Taranar to work every day. I don't know whether it would be at all possible to save finances for that ranger to be given some instructions as to how to turn that reservoir on and off in the need that the hot weather continues rather than council staff having to have like an emergency trip out to that reservoir. Because the people complaining are very decent people, they've been involved with this now for 25 years and, you know, they thought they would get rain on Monday and Tuesday. And also yesterday, Taranar to Lithgow got rain, Taranar never got any. So they're most grateful, I had a nice email this afternoon from Brian Berwick and he's to just pass on his general thanks to the general manager, Daniel Buckins and the staff involved who fixed that reservoir yesterday or earlier this morning.
This mightn't do him, you mightn't do him as a matter of urgency, but we, at the moment, we have somewhere in the vicinity of 200 campers at Lake Wallace. We need some urgent attention to our grey water signage put in place temporarily. Because that stands at the moment, someone over the weekend, I believe it was, I'm not sure, I believe it was council staff has been out there and told the campers they must put their water in the grey, in the dump pit. It doesn't say anywhere on the signage, yeah, this has been an ongoing drum for a long time. Councillor McCandry will back me up here, as you know, councillor, Mayor. We need to get the signage fixed up. We have had a lot of people down there, it's bringing a lot of money to our community. The signage has got to be, if we can do it temporarily, I know we're going to fix up the lease with Green Spot and all that, but we need some temporary signs. We know we're on the border of Sydney Catchment area, but the resident and the campers and the residents that stay down there too with their caravans, they need to have some consistent signage there because at the moment, they've got no idea. Other caravan parks at Forbes, I know it's a different council, then when the drought's on, they beg you to put the grey water on the ground. But for some reason, it's just changed overnight here and we have no signage to say so. Same as the fires, we need to really ramp these signages up because it is causing major dramas within our tourism sector.
I'll move that way, councillor Thompson, Mayor Thompson.
I've got the amendment, Mr Mayor. I move that item 13.5 be dealt with in open council. That's all right, as long as my amendment is... But that doesn't change this particular motion? So? So?
Mayor?
Yeah, but I'm moving it to be dealt with in open council so that it can be broadcast.
Mayor, a point of order, my understanding of the code of conduct, a point of order. My understanding of the code of conduct, it can't be, it's got to be dealt with confidentially, that's quite clear.
In that case, the mayor can rule it out of order. But as long as my name is, as long as it's recorded that I've moved such. Thank you.
So have we resolved to move to closed council? I'm happy to, unless councillor Statham's already moved it?
I have.
Happy to second it. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay, in regards to 13.1, confidential report, proposed acquisition of land for Cullen Bullen sewage scheme. It was resolved that council approved the acquisition of the proposed site for $100,000 plus GST plus disturbance costs. Council instructed Foe and company to prepare a contract of sale of land and to act on council's behalf in respect to the legal aspects of the acquisition. Council delegate authority to the general manager to negotiate the terms. Oops.
Sorry.
You're right. Council delegate the authority of the general manager to negotiate the approved terms of conditions of agreement and execute the document necessary to facilitate the acquisition subdivision and easements of access. The proposed site be classified operational land for the purpose of section 31 brackets 2 of the Local Government Act. The proposed site, next one down, council hold a public meeting for the community at Cullen Bullen. We go to 13.2, tender for the construction of Lithgow Resource Recovery Centre. And the resolution is that council accept the submission from Strutton Propriety Limited for the construction of the Lithgow Resource Recovery Centre. Delegate the general manager authority to enter into contract with Strutton Propriety Limited in accordance with the tender for the construction of Lithgow Resource Recovery Centre. 13.3, confidential report, tender evaluation, Backcullen Road, Portland. Recommendation and resolved by council, accept the submission from Peters Earth Moving Propriety Limited for the upgrade of Backcullen Road. Delegate authority to the general manager to enter into the contract with Peters Earth Moving Propriety Limited in accordance with the tender for the upgrade of Backcullen Road. Reallocate $320,000 from the Backcullen Road project, in brackets, 1000310, close brackets, to the 11 kilometre Glen Ellis Road sealing project, in open brackets, 100052, close brackets, to maximise scope of work under this project. Tender evaluation Glen Ellis Road. The resolution that council accepts the submission from Duke's Earth Moving Equipment for the upgrade of Glen Ellis Road. Delegate authority to the general manager to enter a contract with Duke's Earth Moving Propriety Limited in accordance with the tender for the upgrade of Glen Ellis Road. Reallocate the project of $320,000 from 1000546 Backcullen Road to Glen Ellis Road to maximise the scope of this 11 kilometre sealing project. Final investigation report, code of conduct in the resolution of council. That council notes the code of conduct reviewers in investigation determine that in March 2020, councillor Lesley, when speaking to the media in relation to a spill incident at the Wellerang SDP, breached council's code of conduct and that the conduct should be regarded as extremely serious. Council notes that the code of conduct reviewers investigation found that councillor Lesley breached council's code of conduct at clause 3.1a and e, you must not conduct yourself in a manner that is likely to bring the council or other council officials into disrepute, causes compromise or involves intimidation or verbal abuse. And three, council notes that code of conduct reviewers investigation found that councillor Lesley breached council's code of conduct at clause 7.6h and must not engage in any of the following inappropriate interactions. in any of the following inappropriate interactions. Counselors and administrators making a personal attack on council staff or engaging in conduct towards staff that would contrary to the general conduct of provisions in part three of this code in public forums including social media. Council accepts a recommendation, recommendation one contained in the code of conduct reviewers final investigation report namely that councillor Stephen Lesley be formally censured for the breach under section four four O G of the Act. Council formally censures councillor Lesley under section four four O G of the Local Government Act for breaching the code of conduct three point one A and E and clause seven point six H. Thank you. Yeah, I think we had them adopted. Or haven't had them adopted in open council. Just before you go, councillor Statham? We just need a vote on the... in open council. I know that we did adopt them in closed council, but... so councillor Smith, second to councillor McAndrew, that all four be adopted. Those in favour? Those against? Thank you.